Okay, evening members and welcome to this full council meeting on Wednesday the 28th of February. First of all, can I ask you if you've got your mobile phones, can you either turn them off or turn them to silent? And don't use them for any purpose during the meeting, if as still possible, please. I'll wait for councillor Maitland to delve down in her deep pockets. Great idea. Okay. All right.
Leave for that. Leave for poking at them.
Right. The first thing, members is, obviously as we're all aware, our fellow town councillor and deputy mayor, Kay Dart, passed away a few weeks back. And so I wanted to be able to give members a chance to say anything that they would like in relation to Kay and her service, as she was a previous mayor, et cetera, et cetera. I would also like us to stand just for a minute, silence. Thank you. Thank you, members. And so I'm going to open up to any members who wish to pay their respects to Kay in front of council. If there's anybody who wishes to do that. That's from all. Don't have to stand up, Pat.
I'd rather. She was a very great friend of mine and we were together a long number of years doing various things with the council. She worked very hard. She was a one-parent family. Her husband went off and left her with five children to bring up. She did that, working three jobs a day. So she's a very strong woman, very capable, and she loved people. She was very kind. And I was on the receiving end of a lot of her kindness. On a lighter note as well, she was also very funny. You could have a good laugh with her. And we've had many a laugh together. And she loved her children and their party, and those were the two loves of her life, I think. That was Kay. I'm glad she was my friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything in relation to Kay? Okay, I would just say I knew Kay a long time as well, on and off, both as an officer of Thanet District Council, subsequently as councillor. And I fully support what councillor Moore's just said about her kindness and the service that she put into her community that she represented. And what I will say is, she will be missed. So, thank you, members. Right, let's move on to the rest of the agenda. Apologies, we have apologies from councillor Driver, who is unwell, and councillor Wing. Do we have any others?
Yes, councillor Wing, who's unwell, councillor Young, who has a family matter, and one vacancy.
Thank you. Item two, are there any declarations of interest on the items on the agenda this evening? Give members a chance to declare their interest if they have any. You might not have interest in any of it, but I mean, if you have got an interest in it, if you'd like to declare it. No, I'll take it as a no then. Item three is public request to speak.
But a second item under declaration.
Oh, sorry, beg your pardon, beg your pudding. That teaches me to read it properly, doesn't it? Okay, this is to, sorry, on a declarations of interest, this is to receive a written report from the town clerk and consider whether to permit councillor Young to be absent from council meetings due to the family matter that she has for an extended period of absence.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Young was last able to attend a council meeting on the 4th of October. If she does not return before the 4th of April, she will have been absent for six months. You are asked to consider whether, under section 85.1 of the Local Government Act, you wish to commit an extension to that period. I've suggested three months, but that is a, for you to decide. You're also asked to note this report.
Members, any comments on it? Councillor Nicksey?
I propose we do offer the option of having that to help as much as we can in this present time. And I just think that if anything either came through the clerk or here or anything within the ward, then we can act upon it as extra support if we can do that.
I'll second that myself. Members, any other comments? All those in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you. Right, item three, a public request to speak. Do we have any? Do we don't have any? Item four, minutes of council meetings. This is to approve the following minutes on the 29th of November, 2023, which was an ordinary meeting. And only questions for record may be considered on those. Town clerk.
Thank you, Chair. This is an error. You should be asked to approve the minutes of January's meeting. And so, please, can we, the minutes from November have been approved. There is no action for you to take here. The minutes from January will come to you at March's meeting.
It's my recollection that when we set up the new committee system, we agreed that all committee minutes would come to full council so that members that weren't in our particular committee would see what had happened in that committee. Doesn't seem to be happening.
Councillor Green's quite right. I need to put that in place.
Well, we'll ensure then that that gets on next council, so any meetings that have taken place from that approval to now. Town clerk, thank you. Okay, so there's nothing really to strike through item four. There's no decision to be made on that. Item five is finances, which is including grants. And there's three parts to this, to item five. We'll take it one at a time. So item one of five, to receive a report of payments. The council is asked to note the payments between the 1st to the 29th of February 2024, authorised by the town clerk, which has a total of £8,481.76p. And approve the payments above the threshold dedicated to the town clerk and our finance officer, which totals up to £50,084.87p. Members, any comments or?
Noted.
Councillor Green?
If there are any comments, then I propose that we note the first part and approve the second.
All those in favour of noting that and please show. Thank you. I think we need a second of us, you know, to note it, so thank you for that. Item two is to receive a report from the deputy town clerk and consider five grant applications contained therein concerning the 2024-2025 Community Services, Events Fund and Ramsgate Fund budget. Do you want to take these one at a time? I think we should do that. Yeah.
May I make that?
Please do.
On an introductory note, there is a new process approved for the processing of grants. And I sent you an email about this on Friday explaining what that is. Tonight's processing of grants is a little bit of an interim whilst that new process is put in place.
Okay, members, so you've got that soaked that up. Okay, so item eight of two, the first item, is Citizens Advice Bureau and for an allocation of £21,500. So, if anybody wished to comment on that at all? Councillor Green?
This is a continuation of a grant that we gave last year. That supports a person in the Ramsgate office to give drop-in advice to. It is a lot of money for us, but I personally think it's well worth supporting. I would like to say though, grants of this size are considerably depleting what is in that grant pot. And because I know that our 2003-4 end-of-term budget, we're going to have quite a considerable unspent part. I would like to propose that 10k of that budget is brought forward to 2004-5 grant pot for community services, just to give us a bit more play in that grant pot, which I think is very important at the present time.
Okay. Park that to one side for a sec. What would councillor Nicksey think?
As much as I agree that we should be funding this for the community, so let's just note that for a minute. What I would like to ask is, what feedback do we get with sort of like an evaluation of how the money is used? What I'm trying to say is, I'm hoping it's really beneficial, but I'd quite like to see some evidence that it's beneficial. And also bear in mind that this is for Ramsgate. I just want to remind myself who pays for the Margate Citizens Advice Bureau? So that we, why are we funding it effectively? I'm trying to get the best, the best for the organisation. Who organises that? Do you see what I mean? But I am in support. It sounds very negative. I don't mean it that way at all.
No, I understand what you're saying. Why would we pay? I'll be paying the mortgage because we shouldn't.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll just, councillor.
Yeah, I think partly the reason I put my hand up actually partly answers what you're saying there. Councillor Hudson and I actually went to see them the other day because they sit in our wards and we just wanted to do a nice, you know, nice visit. And it actually funds the supervisor for all of the volunteers. So if you take the supervisor out, the service ceases. But well, there are no volunteers because they need a supervisor. So it is actually not just one person giving advice on one thing.
And that's fantastic. I'd still like to know how those individuals, I mean, do they feel that, you know, giving the?
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a part of an answer of what you're saying, but I just thought that that part of it was helpful. It is actually the supervisor role and that has to be a paid role because of the responsibility of it. So, anyway, that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Green?
Just to answer councillor Nicksey directly. TDC part funds the CAB in both Margate and Ramsgate. And they raise a lot of other money from other sources as well to keep the two offices going. What our money provides is the drop-in service that you described, the supervisor and the volunteers to run a drop-in service in Ramsgate. There's no drop-in service in Broadstairs or in Margate. There's only by appointment. That is what we're for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Heath, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the issue of supervision because most services need a clinical supervisor or in this case, somebody supervising volunteers because otherwise there's sort of issues of ethics, et cetera, and poor practice. And I totally support this, but at the same time, it's making, as councillor Green has said, I think our amount of money in the pot, so I too would like a little bit of the transfers as suggested.
Okay, I need to, can you answer councillor Green's issue there?
So at the moment, any unspent funds from the current financial year that aren't already approved for something specific, is currently resolved to move them into the capital projects and acquisitions budget to be allocated in the year. I'm very confident that there is, there will be in excess of £10,000 available for that councillor Green's resolution.
Members, any comments about what councillor Green was saying in relation to that?
Just like to support that very strongly, I think, at a time where so many people are suffering. Supporting, supporting is part of our lot. And having a bit more money to do that with would be invaluable.
I have to tell you, obviously with current circumstances, the CAB is needed more than ever. They're busy, they're more busy now than they've ever been. And so it is a very well worthwhile thing for, I think, for this council to put its money into because it is serving all of our residents, should they require it. I'll personally second councillor Green's motion in relation to that extra £10,000 coming out to go into this budget. And I would also propose, you didn't propose the 21? No, I would also propose what's in there. So second to that, so a second for the main proposal, councillor Ara. Members, if no one else got anything else to say, then can I have a, oh, sorry, councillor Green.
Check from what councillor Green said. I'm loathe to be pinching money out of other grant funds for next year because we have been doing that for the last couple of years. So as long, and I didn't get, I'm sorry, maybe I just missed the cog somewhere, but I didn't get where the £10,000 was coming from.
The surplus on last year's.
Okay, so it's surplus rather than nicking out of?
Not out of, not out of current budget. It's a surplus, it's a surplus.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I knew what I was voting on.
Always ask.
Thank you.
Members, can I have a shake hands? All in favour, please?
For both.
Which one?
Thank you. All carried, thank you very much. Right, that's that one. Now we can go on to the next. Item B is for the community fund, is pie factory. And part of this, the total project expenditure for them is £37,378 for their projects. And I won't read out everything what the applicant has stated. But I think we all know that Kent County Council has withdrawn youth funding from both the pie factory and also from the quarter-deck in Margate. And they are linked. So they are struggling to get this. From a personal note, obviously councillor Green and myself and the town clerk went down to visit them to see what they would do. I mean, the work that they do there is brilliant for the young people, absolutely brilliant. And it's changed a lot of people's, young people's lives to turn them away from things that they shouldn't be doing to more positive, to more positive things. The only thing that I would say, and I think it's what we've said, you know, I don't think we can keep paying this money. They've got to get their funding from elsewhere and they are currently looking at various grants, et cetera, et cetera, and they're very good at getting them. This money, this £17,378 is a tide-over sum till the end. It takes them through into next year. So I have to say, I fully support this. And from a personal point of view as well, I am raising this at the senior cabinet level with Thanet District Council tomorrow. So it's on the agenda for tomorrow. I don't know what will come out of that, obviously, but, but anyway, members, over to you, councillor Crenden.
Yeah, I support this. I noticed a news report yesterday or earlier today that talked about the introduction and increase of mental health hubs for young people. It just seems to be tragic that we are introducing mental health hubs but taking money away as a society from the preventative work that this does. So this is preventative work definitely needed. So, thank you.
Councillor Nicksey?
I support it as well. Do we have any news with regards to the venue? Because I know that they were given a notice to leave, weren't they, if I remember rightly?
No.
It weren't?
Give us notice to leave, no. No, they told us they haven't. It's quite a lot of work to be done on the buildings to make them proper. But when you go into that building and you see the equipment that they've got in there to be able to operate, especially music and their music side generating that is amazing.
And that's what I just said.
They've even got to play the drums.
They're okay with where they are at the moment?
Yeah. There's no, TDC have got no, KCC have got no, have not said they can't stay there. I'm not sure who was first.
I just want to say, I've also visited. I think they're doing very impressive work. We've arranged to go, a couple of us, next week to see if we can do it to help and I very support this.
It'd be great if you all can.
Yes, I feel very much the same too, thank you. In view of what councillor Crenden said particularly, I mean, mental health hubs, I find that totally ironic. I mean, the CAM service is on its knees. Why don't you just fund the CAM service properly? Forget inventing, you know, reinventing the wheel. It makes me very angry.
I think, I think, well, I haven't forgotten, councillor. I think.
Blame it about this, but.
I think what we need, I think what everybody needs, bear in mind, not only this council but the people who are watching it, our residents, is that it's the government cuts to local authorities like Kent County Council and Thanet that has created the gap because there isn't the money to generate from council taxes. It just doesn't generate enough money to give these services. And unfortunately, the government do not recognise that. And so that's why our services locally are having to suffer. Councillor.
Yeah, I have visited the place quite a few times while I was mayor as well, you know, some of the events I attended at this fantastic place. And I think it's in our world, isn't it? I know they do a fantastic job as we don't have any youth clubs locally in our town. And Pie Factory does a wonderful job with our young generation. I would like to actually propose the exclamation amount that's given to the organisations.
Councillor Green?
Yeah, Pie Factory runs a number of schemes. The importance of this scheme that they're asking us to support is their drop-in schemes. Two for 14 to 18-year-olds and one for under 14-year-olds. They do have a financial plan. They have the money to run those schemes for six months. And they say that they are the sort of schemes that's the most difficult to raise money for. They have a bid in for about half the money to run those schemes for the other six months. And our money would make that up so that they could run it for the whole year. In other words, employ the people for the whole year. It's important to realise that people's jobs are at stake. Beyond that, they're not, we're not committing ourselves to do anything beyond that. But just to give them the space to try and raise the money to continue what they're doing.
To give them a chance. Is there a second for councillors? Oh, just so you got, you got, councillor Hudson. All in favour, members? Carried, thank you.
May I ask the members for clarification on the resolution? If the applicant is not successful in getting the £20,000, how should they use this 17? Because bear in mind, this is something to be, they want to start from the 1st of April. Would members happy if they run all of these things for as long as they can on 17,000, say half a year? But the applicant doesn't want to be having to come back to us and ask that question?
No.
And they could be putting in other.
Exactly, yeah.
There's no stigma to their service. And I think that's the problem with health hubs is that there is still a stigma to that. And this doesn't carry a stigma. This is just kids being able to be kids.
People don't want to use secondary services for that reason.
Thank you. I think the important, one important for me when councillor Green and councillor and I visited was.
Was the drum kit.
Was apart from the drum, apart from the drum kit. But there was, one of the, one of the people who were there, he was in kind of trouble, went to then, went to that service there, went to Pie Factory there. Turned his life around and he works for them and he does all the good work with the rest of the youth. And I just think that in itself is something that they should be all very proud of. And I think we should join them in there. So I really thank you, members, for that. Okay.
On the next item, I just wanted to propose that we accept it because the amount is so small and the work they do is so good. It doesn't seem worth spending.
Well, if you, if you let me introduce it, I would be, I would be more than happy, I would be more than happy for you to do it. Yeah, come on, Steve, help yourself. So item C is a request from Friends of Ellington Car Community Cafe for a sum of £1,738. And I'm saying that because obviously if we've got people watching, then that's for them. So members, open to you for any discussion, councillor, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. There is an administrative problem with this grant. And it's where, it's retrospective. The project that, the period that they would like funded is from the 6th of November to the 15th of April. So theoretically, it should come out, well, first of all, it should come out of the current financial year's budget, which is depleted. We also don't give retrospective grants. The reason it has come to you though is that we did give the money retrospectively this time last year, but did not realise that we were giving the money retrospectively. This was not clear in the application. But because that has happened once, it's whether you're prepared for it to happen one more time but with clarification that, but in future it shouldn't be like this. We have been assured that actually nobody's in debt at the moment because of this. I don't, however it is that it's been delivered so far, individuals aren't out of pocket.
Members, councillor Crenden first.
I am inclined to accept it on this occasion that it is continuation of last time. It is one of the smaller grants, but also we do have users competing in place, um, in the new financial year.
Future.
That will prevent that from happening again. And we know that it's, it's not a real one this occasion. So I am going to be prepared to accept it on those grounds.
Councillor.
I think technically, yes. We're still in February. We're still in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, are we not? Could we not use that budget?
We haven't got any.
It's depleted. It doesn't, it's, it's spent to the last penny.
Not exist.
Challenge. From elsewhere.
My view, my view would be, we approve this with a caveat that goes to them that says, do not do this again.
Yes.
If you want an application, put it in, you know, not, can't be re- retrospective. I think we all know what a benefit that change in Ellington Park has been. Um, so, you know, I'm fully supportive of it, but.
So my question was, did we, when we paid it, did we explain that to them last time? Because if we didn't, they, quite frankly, I mean, they, they don't know, they don't know.
No, I know. That's why, that's why I'm saying we should approve it. And then, but part of that is that we tell them.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
No more. Councillor.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, Jen. Yeah, no, I visited them, the, uh, the workspace, uh, club, I should be, and they're doing a very, very good job and the delivery would be, uh, familiar to them, everybody comes there. And a great time. I think it's so important that, you know, we, we support them. So I, again, I want to propose that the, the true amount is given to them. Uh, uh, if it's okay with everyone. Thank you.
Councillor Nicksey.
I was just going to declare an interest as an elderly person with a screaming grandchild. I had a cup of tea there last week.
I don't think you'd declare a cup of tea. She, she's probably paid for it as well.
That's the other thing. I mean, I could easily have paid for it, but anyway.
No, it's, it didn't have to declare an interest. It's all right. You're all right. So, members, anybody else want a word on that? Have we got a proposal? Have we got a second? All those in favour, please show.
And I think that there's a second part to that. And where is the money coming from? So next year's budget or find some more money available within the current year's budget? If you were looking to buy our funds in from somewhere, uh, one budget that's off, off the top of my head, we had twenty-five thousand pounds put aside for the May election. Uh, the charge for that election was twenty-two thousand pounds. So I know that there's a, there, there's some funds there if required.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, yeah.
Brilliant.
All in favour? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought we were in favour.
No, I was, I was up before, up, up before we got to it.
Carry on.
As a general, um, I mean, we're doing what we did last year. We're nicking out of next year's budgets.
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Well, this is twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah, I know, but that, we're not paying it out of that now. You just missed that bit.
But we, but we, but we're saying the budgets are empty.
No.
No.
Town clerk.
Okay.
Excuse me, but just that the town clerk has come up with, uh, with a budget that was for the May elections. And there is money still left over from those May elections. It didn't cost us as much. So that, that amount can come out of that.
I went to mush at that point, obviously. He figures going around it. My apologies. Um, thank you. I just, okay, sorry. My hand back down again.
So all in favour?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. So that's carried. Thank you.
Chair, I think we can expect to get another application from them for the coming year.
Yeah.
But that's up to them.
Yeah, that's exactly. I mean, we'll, we'll deal with it when we get them. Um, okay, next item, um, from the event fund, uh, uh, an application is from Lumen Studios International Limited. And that is, uh, asking, they're asking for a grant of two thousand three hundred. And the total projected expenditure of that grant is two thousand three, uh, of, of the, what they want to do, which is projections at St George's Church crypt. So you might want to creep down and have a look. Town clerk, yeah.
Chair, uh, may I suggest that this application be deferred? And, um, initially it was planned that this activity was going to take place on the ninth of March, which ties in with, um, celebrating the emergence of spring. But the act, the event's, uh, now being reorganised until the twenty-first of September. And one of the new changes is that the budget is going to be allocated in quarters. So we need to consider them in quarters and not let someone get, jump in and get to that quarters money before everyone else has the opportunity. So I suggest that this would, uh, be suitable for, um, the May's council meeting at which grants will be considered along with everything else in, in that quarter.
Totally, utterly agree.
I agree. Um, I just think that we, when we are allocating in quarters, we do need to know certain amount in advance of their event. So there may need to be applying a couple of quarters ahead of when they actually need. I mean, I don't know how that fits in with what your thinking is.
Okay.
Um, uh, myself, the deputy town clerk, admin officer and communications officer. We had a, a sit down yesterday to, to talk through how to get this out into the community, to make sure that people uh, aren't caught out by the new system. Everyone is warned as possible. So that they, they've got plenty of time to be getting used to the, the new plan.
Councillor.
There were, I agree with what's being proposed, but there were a number of items in this application that bothered me somewhat.
Hmm.
Travel accommodation for non-Ramsgate residents, a hundred pound. I don't think we can support that. Um, I'd like to know more about the curative fee.
Exactly.
And, um, I'm saying that funding has not been sought from elsewhere. I'd like to see them at least seeking funds from elsewhere. So could we sort of let them know?
Yeah.
About that?
Yeah. Good comment. Anybody else?
And we have a, we have a horrible, this, uh,
Okay, sorry. Nobody is speaking.
Uh, sorry, we're, we're cross talking here. What's, what's going on? I did ask councillor Moore first and then I'll come to you, councillor.
Is this the same, uh, thing that they did on, when we put the lights on, Christmas lights, when they did it in St George's Church? And they had a light and it, it sounds same sort of thing?
This is in the crypt.
Yeah, yes, within the thing, it's the church itself.
Yeah, but this is under, underground. So it's not the same thing. I suppose it is and it isn't, if you know what I mean.
Lights and music.
I, I don't know.
Son of a rem, yeah. Couldn't understand it.
I couldn't.
Well, I couldn't understand it.
Okay, just I have an idea of this group, that's all. I, I wasn't aware of this, uh, Lumen District, that's what we did. Yeah.
And we've got a clue. Councillor.
I just wanted to clarify perhaps what councillor Moore said. I mean, the festival of sound did something in the crypt and I think it's probably more along those lines. So, um, that was quite interesting and it was quite well attended.
Okay, so the, councillor, sorry, councillor.
I was just thinking that the non-Ramsgate residents may be presenters, people that are actually, um, doing some of the projections, but perhaps we could, if we are going to push this forward to, um, into the, the next grant funding.
Yeah, quarter.
Quarter. And we could ask those questions in advance, that, that chance to do that.
That's what David Green is doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, what Steve Alpin said.
Okay, we're, we're all right with that. So, members, we won't deal with this now. Won't deal with this now. Um, but we'll, we'll be bringing it back. Plus, hopefully we get the answers that members were, were asking. Okay, telling no for, for that. Cool. And last one, um, from the Ramsgate Fund is, uh, Miss Ramsgate Organisation. Um, oh, sorry. Oh, I beg your pardon. You know what I've done? I've crossed the Ramsgate Old Motor and Motorcycle Club. Sorry, Ramsgate Old Motorcycle. Yeah. They are requesting, uh, three thousand five hundred pound. Am I correct with that? Yeah, with the total project cost of six thousand eight hundred and fifty. And the event is a classic car run and static car show, which stalls in entertainment for children. Um, the car run starts in Canterbury Garden Centre and then comes to Ramsgate. Um, blah, blah, blah. And the, the, the report author notes, uh, he's got a breakdown of grant requested. Uh, quite a number of things, which comes to the, the, the total cost and now asking for three thousand five hundred. Councillor.
Who you, Chair? Could I ask what we gave them last year?
Hasn't been.
We didn't, because this has been cancelled for a few years.
Yeah, it's been cancelled for a few.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Yeah, no.
I remember seeing it. Councillor Hudson.
Two thousand pounds, what does that mean?
I don't know. But that might be the part that they're paying and not, not what they want to match. Uh, no, that, they put, they, they put down the total cost. That's the total bits of it of what, of what they're doing.
Costs.
Don't know. Uh, councillor Mason.
I propose that we give them a thousand pound.
Now, is there a second for that?
Yeah, I second that.
No, I'd second it. Councillor Crichton.
I was only going to comment that, um, they've got a hundred and ten per person, now fifty of which are from Ramsgate, which I know is something that we always like to, to know. So I was just going to highlight that.
Town clerk.
Chair, in relation to management costs, uh, we have got slightly further information. This includes stationery postage, route planning, sundry and expenses. Uh, it, there isn't a suggestion that there's paid staff here.
Hmm. Councillor.
I mean, I, I don't know whether everybody's been to it in previous years, but it is quite early.
Yeah.
Must take quite a bit of organising.
Yeah.
Does Ramsgate's name out there?
Yeah.
Um, but we should get them, but they're asking for, I don't know, but it is good for the town.
Hmm, yeah.
Councillor.
I'd take councillor Green's point of view. I mean, it does bring a lot of people to the town. It's been a very popular event in the past, although it's kind of not happened for a while. Um, I think possibly a bit more money.
Well.
Yeah.
We've got a proposal at the moment. Um, go through that. Proposal. It's been proposed and seconded. So all in favour of giving a thousand pound? One, two, three. All those against? Uh, that's lost, I'm afraid. So someone's come up with something else. Councillor Nicksey?
Um, I'd like to propose that we give them two thousand pounds.
Okay. Any conversation on that, members? Okay, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Carrie. Right now, where was I? Oh, yes. Um, from the Ramsgate Fund, um, uh, Miss Ramsgate Organisation. Um, and they wish to nominate, uh, oh, sorry, that's a different, that's a different part. I picked a part. Okay, so the total project expenditure is five thousand and forty-five pounds. And the grant that they're requesting is five thousand pound. And the current maximum award that we can do is three thousand five hundred. Councillor Nicksey, oh, do you?
Sorry, that's town clerk. Yeah, go for it.
Uh, remind members of the resolution to, uh, use the grant quarterly, which means that for the Ramsgate Fund with a budget of twenty thousand pound per annum, there's then, uh, five thousand pounds per quarter to allocate.
Where are we?
So if we're thinking, if we're, we're about to embark on the first quarter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, if I may, okay, so this comes to us every year. We always hear the side that it's, it's good for the town. It's also good for the youth involved and so on and so forth. I don't dispute that for a minute and I say that every single year. However, every single year, I also say there's an element of, um, two things. One is, um, what are we constantly repaying for every year? And I know people are going to say you have to buy new frocks and the rest of it, but I don't. Under our climate element and our recycling, reuse and what have you, we have asked this group to explain what they could reuse along those lines. I've not received anything back from that, having asked in previous years. And also it does say that funding has not been sought elsewhere. And, and of course they've put their personal money in. Anybody organising event puts their personal money in it. So I'm sort of like going to put that to one side for the moment. What I am going to say about this again is I'd like us to be able to, to fund it because it is good for, for the area and the youth and so on and so forth. But I'd also like to see it move along with the times in, in every shape and form. And if that means that things have to be reused, recycled and so on and so forth, I would like evidence of it, please, before I attempt to vote for a fund.
Okay, before I bring you in, councillor, just, just to clarify, um, that, uh, the court, the court clothing and accessories are just under two thousand pound. That's what that, the two thousand pound for. Flow construction, painting, etc. is one thousand one hundred pound. Um, and fuel with entry fees, entry fees for events, at events, bringing subscriptions, not safety, I'm still higher. Uh, one thousand, um, well, it looks like we've got one million here, but it's, uh, um, one thousand one hundred and ninety-five pound. Uh, that's, that adds up to the total of five thousand forty, forty-five members. Councillor.
Yeah, I wanted a couple of comments. I, I do agree with councillor Nicksey. I understand, um, that the clothes themselves are handmade each year for the girls. Um, so I don't know how much there is a recycling with that, but the accessories, um, I don't know, you know, maybe there. However, I just noticed that, um, in the last few years, we've been asked for ten thousand pound. And this is five. So, um, not quite sure the difference. Um, have they listened to and responded to those concerns that we've made before about economies? Um, so I don't know if that's in there. I've had trouble downloading the, uh, report for this one. So I haven't been able to look at it properly, but it is half of what you said from last year. So I don't quite know why.
Anybody else?
No, no, no.
Who's to speak? Councillor Moore for something else.
Um, I think, uh,
Crichton. Councillor Crichton.
Yeah.
That's me.
Uh, is where there was more money asked for before is what we did in the matter of us that we didn't get it asked. We saw the, uh, dinner dance when we had the carnival here. And they had the, uh, all the floors and they all came in. They had a meal. It was only a, a ploughman's, it wasn't an expensive one. But there were all the queens who were in the parade, loads of them, and the chaperones and their families. They were all there. Uh, at the Manston.
Outside of Ramsgate.
Outside of Ramsgate, yeah. We remember.
It was in Ramsgate, but I must be.
No, no, it's not. Not in our jurisdiction.
Doesn't come under the town council, no.
And I think that's where the money they were asking for, they survived without it. And, and all these queens and courts got awards. So they had to be paid for as well.
Okay. Councillor.
Well, I've got, I mean, this has come up every year and I can remember having this discussion with Pete Campbell was chairing and, yes. I sort of have reservations about the Miss Ramsgate. But I do have, as councillor Mixie said, this seems, well, a hundred and, one thousand nine hundred and fifty seems a lot for clothing and accessories. An element of recycling or.
Take it from the nest.
That's just, it's a chance.
Oh, that's the long dress.
Oh, no, no, councillor Nicksey.
But I mean, if, if they are representing the council and the council's ethos is for, um, you know, the But I mean, if they are representing the council and the council's ethos is for, um, you know, the green issues, climate change, recycling and so on and so forth, and they're representing us, I would like that to be at the forefront of what they're representing us for. You know, we they we should be sort of like paving the way for other councils or courts or what have you to see what we're doing. And so I think there's a a disjoint in what they're doing and what we'd like. Well, that needs to be addressed, there's no two ways about it, especially if we ask for it every year.
Okay, I I think more other things, uh, equality issues and stuff of that nature, not that I want to really get into that.
Yeah.
But I do think.
I agree.
But, um, yeah, but that's their choice.
Yeah.
To make, aren't they? Can't agree.
And they must have responded to that question in on the application form, did they?
Chair, I know we've asked before that, um, uh, all all genders are welcome to to take part.
Think about that minute.
Sure, I meant the issue that councillor Nixon raised.
Oh, uh, no, it's not. About why why it was ten in the past. It's it's possible that it's because in the past it was a dual application that also included the event that councillor Moore has mentioned. But I can't say for certain.
Yeah, it was, it was that.
Well, with regards to recycling, climate awareness, anything like that, have we got anything?
Uh, so in answer to the question about a positive impact on the environment. Yes, we aim to help the environment by recycling any products we can. For example, if we take food to eat, we bring everything back home with us, leaving no waste behind. When we get home, uh, the items are sorted and disposed and recycled in the correct manner. Waste food goes in the compost or food waste bins. Card and paper waste goes in the appropriate waste recycling bags. Packages that can be recycled, we put in the blue bins at home along with plastic bottles or tin cans. We use wooden or biodegradable cutlery where possible, or metal instead of plastic. The wooden can be recycled as can paper plates and dishes and other items such as tablecloths and serviettes. Also, paper drinking straws are used. If we have to purchase foods for taking out to events, we try to buy fresh fruit and vegetables from the farmer shops or local greengrocers in Ramsgate. We buy most other items in Ramsgate. Um, or Westwood, even down to shoes or clothes where possible. We ask the girls and chaperones on the court to bring their own drinking bottles, which I fill with water for them. It saves using numerous bottles of water. One of the other carnival courts and their committee members collects all the used drink cans and they save them until they have a certain amount before taking them to somewhere and selling the tins. This is uh one of their ways to fu- to fundraise.
Okay. Uh, right, I've got three more, three more, councillor Crindon first, then councillor Hudson and then councillor Maitinson.
Because I was distracted with water, I wasn't quite sure of the gender question that was raised, but they, I understand that they, um, don't have separate changing rooms in those areas. Which does make that a difficulty.
Thank you, councillor Hudson.
The recycling's lovely, I do think it needs to come up, so recycling, clothing as well. And after, look at the example of the mayor, the mayor's clothing is reused, reused year after year. And perhaps they, perhaps look at something that is more recyclable, maybe announce it that goes on for generations down the line.
I don't think that's the nature of what they do, is it? Or they're actually, you know, from what you see, but I'm just saying, I'll just make a comment on it.
It's just gone anyway.
Yes, yes, rocks are out. Councillor Maitinson.
I'm not denying, I'm not going to tell the story.
Please not, we haven't got time.
A shabby dog story that wouldn't take all these things. But they they also elected an escort. So there was a woman or girl on the bank.
Oh. What should we have?
Was there any self? I'm not sure.
Whether that's, yeah, whether that's, uh, is is that is that an equality issue? I'm not quite sure about it. Um, councillor Hudson.
You're encouraging, as Tom said, to all young men to be involved in this, it's why, why is it Miss Ramsgate?
Great.
It's a traditional thing, I'm a attraction of it, I think it's been really good. It does encourage young girls to be more confident in how they present themselves and, you know, it's part of their growing up, I agree with that, but I think it should be younger men as well, why not?
But they're going to have to share the same changing room.
Sure, well, they can sort.
Well, I just, I just, I just think, you know, they're there to be looked at and that's, that's for me, but really the thing that I don't like.
Yeah.
That I don't. And people are saying therefore that women or young girls are only valued for their looks and dresses.
Saying they're there to be looked at, and and that's the problem, yeah. Councillor Nixon.
I'd like to propose three thousand pounds. With the advice when it's, when it's given to the group, that we are trying, as I say, they, we would like them to be able to promote our values and our ethos because they are Miss Ramsgate and this is very important to us. And so things like reusing, um, accessories, clothing and this and the other is as important as all the other wonderful stuff they're doing, that's brilliant that they are doing that. Um. But also along the lines of, you know, what what can they do to like cut their costs, you know, for them to sort of like think ahead and think, right, well, okay, if this is the amount of money we do, what would we do with that? However, we could put that across. I do understand the value of what they're doing for Ramsgate, I don't want that to 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 go hidden in this, we do appreciate this.
Okay, um, we can go around the houses here and I'm not intending to do that, to spend too much more time on this. I wasn't going to say time, I was just saying I don't want to keep going around the houses with it. Councillor Moore.
I think what you say is, right, uh, but perhaps we could have a meeting or some of us could have a meeting with Peter Morley and talk to him about it. It's easier that way, I agree, that to sort it out, that this is what we will pay, so do you going to do to cut back?
Hmm. Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Okay, right, we do have a proposal, we have a second one. Hey? This evening. Members, all those in favour, a thousand pounds, I don't hate. Thank you, all those against, those abstain. That's carried, thank you. Right, moving on to, um, item six, no, sorry, 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 sorry. Item three, right. To nominate four councillors to be part of the grant scrutiny package as resolved by the Finance and General Purposes Committee. So that's four councillors to look at the grants, uh, applications when they come in and decide, uh, who gets what.
Uh, to advise.
Well, to advise, yeah, but still who gets what and where and then report back to council. So members, anybody wants to take part in, who want to be part of this? Don't all rush.
Yeah, I would actually.
Right, councillor Everton, thank you.
Interesting process.
Councillor Moore, you'll be part of it, thank you. Anybody else to her? Councillor Hudson, hey, thank you all. Any more, any more for anyone? One more we need, I'm looking at you, councillor Maitinson, you've obviously got.
I would turn everything down.
Go on.
Councillor.
Will as well.
Councillor. Okay, so we we have the four, so, uh, is there anybody else who want to put their names forward?
The four, Chair.
Huh?
Who's the four?
Uh, we have councillor Everton, Moore, Hudson and Nixon.
Oh, great.
Oh, it's like the perfect team.
Perfecto.
Three musketeers, four musketeers.
Perfecto, yeah. So all in favour? Thank you, that's carried then and good luck. Um, right, item six, um, assets, Warwick Skate Park. Um, this is to receive a note, uh, and no deverbal update from councillor Austin regarding a Warwick Skate Park. And before I ask you to give your update, just to let you know that I was contacted by the council's asset manager, uh, this afternoon. She tried to contact councillor Austin and tried to contact the town mayor and couldn't get either of you. You were both in need, so she contacted me and just to let you know what she what she'd said is that if the council was prepared to accept, um, no more than a seven-year lease. Um, and there's a, there is a reason for saying that. Um, that if you go over seven years, it then becomes extremely complicated in law in relation to open spaces and everything of that of that nature. But obviously, um, they will be happy to give, to consider a further time lease. So to extend that, if you want it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, uh, on a peppercorn basis, the cost. And that that could be done if if the town council agrees this evening, uh, that could be resolved as early as next week.
Good.
But I think, but I think what needs to be done, and I had a quick chat with the town clerk, is to what needs to be done is for the town clerk then to contact, um, Miss Plant to to advise, because we need to know exactly what she.
Know what our liabilities are.
Well, yeah, and exactly what the area is that we're taking on.
Exactly.
So, and I I didn't wish to steal your thunder, but I thought you should know that before.
Well, that's that's a rather larger amount of thunder than I had. So, yes, so the my chasing email this morning was responded to.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So, so what I really wanted to say was, because that was where where we were, was we were still waiting to to hear from TDC and we were chasing. I think it was a question of if if a licence or a lease was going to be allowed, whether this council was going to take that on or whether we were going to set up a a trust for the purpose, because if this council has doubts about its liabilities, et cetera, then a trust for the purpose might be better. But that in the meanwhile, our modest bit of good news was that we had, we had been successful in bidding for ten thousand pounds towards refurbishing the basketball court, which is the bit immediately behind the bio factory. Um, which is about half of what it will cost to resurface that tarmac, which is in a very poor state. Um, we do have probably just about enough in the bank account to make up the difference. But in the meanwhile, we're bidding for other funds and we have also approached our KCC councillors whose members allowance is going down from fifteen thousand pounds, I think, as it was a year to three thousand five hundred pounds in the new financial year, so we can't be expecting very much from them, even if they're feeling generous, let's go. Um, so, but we are looking at other sources for that. So it was just to let people know that we'd had a a positive response and that's actually the TK Shared Prosperity Fund via any council. So it's sort of wheel to the wheel through.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. The way in what you just said.
Skate park, sorry, the Ramsgate Skate Park project.
And my other question was, does a seven-year lease allow funding bids?
That's the difficulty, uh, sorry, for me, Chair.
Yeah.
But Mr. Momo's advice when he came to have a look, um, at the, who's the the head of public realm, uh, was that we should be looking for at least a twenty-year, twenty-one-year lease because that's what funders expect when they're looking at a large amount of money like we're going to need to actually to do the skate park. So that is one of the difficulties, but we'll have to pick that up in front, I think.
So, I I mean, I would obviously suggest that leave that in a capable hands of the town clerk to contact and to iron out, to contact TDC and iron out all of all of those issues. Um, and so members happy with that? Because there isn't, uh, it it was just to receive further update, but if members are happy with that, we can go forward and then if it needs to come back, it will come back.
I think it needs to come back.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's fine, and that's what will happen. Okay, thank you. And last but definitely not least, um, Radford House, and there's two parts to this. I don't know whether they can both be taken together effect effectively, but um, to receive a note, the Radford House related income and expenditure for the year. And the second part is to receive a written report from the Radford House project manager and verbal update from councillor Nixon.
He goes first or go second?
Uh, no, I.
Nothing to say?
Do we need a present for the year?
Four.
Note the expenditure for the year.
If that's what you want to do, yes, I I'm more than happy to.
I propose that.
Yeah.
Note.
Right, okay, all in favour of noting that and accepting? Did you want, did you not, sorry? Okay, please do, please do that.
I'm removing asbestos. Oh. Sorry. Yes, there's. There was asbestos removed from above, uh, the the kitchen area where the roof is on the first floor. Uh, that was necessary for removal before new insulation can be put in. There is some asbestos remaining in, uh, the 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 main roof on above the the second floor. Uh, because it's it's encapsulated and safe, it it, there's a very clear area of concrete with asbestos, why there is concrete with asbestos in the roof, we're not sure. But it's very clear where it is and it's safe to be putting things on top of it. Whereas the asbestos above the kitchen, uh, was was breaking up and it wasn't clear where the areas were. So there has been some removed, some is staying and is safe to stay. And. Do we have a ongoing proposed expenditure? What happens next? And how much is it going to?
Yeah, please. So the council approved, um, uh, a a team of people that were in involved in getting us to a Reba stage call, including, so the project manager, architect, building control, mechanical and electrical, civil and structural engineer. Principal, CDM principal designer. Uh, so those costs were approved by the council, but they're they're not what is a piece of work that we're going to have and quickly. So there there are stage, there's been stage payments and, um, I, sorry, the deputy town clerk is keeping a spreadsheet of what we have paid out so far and how much more is within that approved budget.
So that that comes up. That's our business service. But you don't have any idea how much more you're going to have to pay. That's our business service.
So, uh, past, uh, pasta, which has already been approved. The only addition is that, and I believe it's in councillor Nixon's update, is there was a new bu- building regulation, level two, schedule two, um, that came into effect in October. And it's now necessary to have a principal designer for building regulations.
We just government bought it, we didn't, the government bought this and we haven't to do it.
And I I have double-checked this with two other projects within Ramsgate to say, I if you take, have it find this person as well, and the answer was yes, we're, well, the industry is now trying to figure out who who's going to do this body of work, it looks like it's possibly going to fall on, um, architects to implement.
Well, I'm not sure some way to do it.
Um.
This is, they they don't do this though, this has been the issue, but.
Well, they did in the past. Um, I think it's where there there's something that 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 changed in the legislation that came into place in October that that's moving between the, uh, that our structural and civil engineering person was going to do is, and is now going to be by the architect, so there there is an unknown there, but past what has been approved, that the next cost we're expecting is refurbishment costs, the the quotes from the contractors sent to me. No, so we've, oh.
Uh, I I just wanted, I just.
We're moving on to the second part.
I just wanted to come back on you. Yeah, I mean, architects may have been doing it, but now it's a legal requirement to do it. So that's beside the point, the legal requirement. So that's beside the point. The legal requirement is that a specialised person to actually deal with it. So under the building regs, because normally architects don't deal with building regulations.
Sorry, I don't know where you got that.
No, well, it's not, it's not normal for them to make a building regulation application, then to oversee building regulations on a site.
No, no.
That's what I'm saying.
The building inspector or in London, the district surveyor would oversee it. But they, they've been sort of burnt. It's a regulation that the Tories don't think that we need anymore, which is exactly what happened to Rhenford Town. So now you get all these surveyor firms that are doing the building regulations. And on the little studio we built, he stood at the gate and said, oh, he thought it was all right, which
I am unhappy with, not particularly in this case, but generally.
Can I just, sorry, I just, I need to bring us back to the point that we're here discussing it. Your points are very valid. The questions you're asking are valid questions, councillor Megan. But I don't want to get sidetracked by anything. Sorry, if I, did you want to continue?
If I could answer the question about costs, so there is a quantity surveyor. This council has seen a cost plan from the quantity surveyor. There was, there was actually three options and the council went for the lowest option, but with an instruction that a further, 10% of quality engineering took place to bring the cost down further. Once Reba Stage Three has been undertaken, the quantity surveyor will redo those costs. And then we'll be going out to tender after Reba Stage Four. Are we allowed to hear what the costs are?
Not in public. Not in public.
All right.
But for obvious reasons.
Yeah, they're commercially sensitive because we're not going out yet.
But we can tell you.
I mean, I think the query, which, to be fair, was started by councillor Wynn, and I would support what she asked for, was how much is it going to cost in the end? And, and don't tell me how long this applies to string, because these things are tightly controlled.
You can do that, but we'll have to do it in private session.
Yeah. Can I also, if you don't mind, Chair? So we've said all along what our budget is for this project. We've also said that was projected years ago and the costs have increased. We've always made sure that everybody working for us understands that we aren't a bottomless pit. And therefore we'll go with, like, you know, the budget increases that have happened. But, you know, we don't have any more than this amount. They know that that's what we've got. So when you go out to tender, the, you know, people applying for tender, you know, answering, will know that that's what we've got. It's not like we're just throwing money at something. So we've got to remind ourselves of that. We are in control of what we are doing with our money for that building. We're not just being led by the nose. And the other thing is, is we have budgeted for that and therefore we have that money there. So it's not like, oh God, how the hell are we going to find it? So, so I do understand the query, but there's a lot of things that have been asked so far or said. That's either already been agreed by the council, because we've kept you up to date on it. Or is there for people to see, because it is available as updates from myself. So it's not that anybody's trying to hide anything. It's very, it's very a clear process that we are following together.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I know I'm cross talking here, but I think what councillor Nixon is saying is when councillor Wing sent her email around to everybody about Radford House, I made, I made it clear to her. I am quite happy for Radford House to be a one-item meeting, for it to be gone through. More than happy with that, but made, also made it clear that every step of the way, this council has been open and honest with all the money that's been spent or is projected to be, to be spent. And it's been there for everybody to look at. And it's not just happened overnight. Councillor Wink has been part of this council for some time now. And so she knows exactly what's happening and that's for whatever her reason is, I don't, I don't know. But she's concerned about it, same as you are. And I think we're all concerned to a certain degree about how much the end cost is.
Yes.
And it may well be, I'm sorry if I'm going to take words out of your mouth, but it may well be that as a council, you know, we ain't got any more money. And therefore this isn't going to get done, that isn't going to get done. And we do the basics, what we can do before we do all the flowery stuff. And that is what, so we need to take control of. I did have councillor Huxley.
It says for the year it was over £600 for the gas and electricity. Is that, do you think that's paying for my own bill at home? I mean, is it sort of something, you know, do we think we could get a better deal? And also how does that link with the boiler-related work, which was £7,800, whatever? And can we have heat pumps instead? Or what? Thanks.
No, it's yours to know.
For good reason, but I'll let the town clerk explain the rest.
So at the start of the financial year, the council had approved installation of a new boiler. It was a new, it was a second-hand boiler, a new second-hand, it was only six months old. Because we didn't actually have a working boiler. And so we couldn't, we didn't have a base position from which to then consider heat loss and energy efficiency, actually, if you're not heating the building. And also it became apparent that it was problematic for the building how long it had not had heating for. And also in order to implement meanwhile uses and start to test the building, it needed to have heat. The gas and electric, and it's not a hugely different figure to actually what we're paying here. Obviously, the desire is to bring it down. Also, after the last, the last year, we haven't had conservation, conservation in mind. It hasn't been the plan to turn the boiler on as infrequently as possible. It's been to, let's have the building as hot, as warm as we need it to be. And then see, right, well, where can we, can we chip away and bring things down?
Can I just say, sorry to interrupt, you know, that's the meanwhile use. We've almost said a case of like, right, let's turn the heating on, do you know what I mean? Let's see where we go with this, because if we didn't do this baseline, we wouldn't know how to improve things. So, so I mean, I, I mean, I hear all your comments, but it's good that we've seen this, because it's a case of like, right, now what we can do, do for that. Just to go to your point for the, for the heat pumps, our mechanical electrical engineers have advised us highly not to have them, because it would be more expensive. And what we have at the moment, you know, the experts have told us, Pat, so I'm not going to argue with them.
No, I'm sorry, I'm agreeing with you.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, you know, they've said what you've got works and it is fit for purpose and we wouldn't be advising you to do anything else. We've saved on that, actually.
Just, just to say, can over time, say in five years' time, can we look and see that the the cost is going down because of the retrofitting you're going to do to the building? Isn't that the aim, as is here? In terms of climate change, isn't that our aim? I mean, we, we specifically said that, haven't we, as a council?
Councillor Green?
Yeah, we've, we've got some ideas that bring the energy costs down and we need to bring them down. Part of that is insulation.
Yeah.
You know, it's virtually not insulated at all at the moment. Second part of that is to change the way we use the gas boiler, just to maintain a minimum temperature throughout the building. And then use radiant heaters in the individual, in the individual rooms when they're being used. So that, both of those things should bring the energy costs down. Looking into that at the moment.
We can labour the point. I think it's 20, the government put it back, but I think legally it's 2030. They have to get rid of all gas boilers, both domestic and commercial.
I don't think it's get rid of, but I think it's when you won't be able to buy, when you, yeah.
But just labour the point again, you know, we're going to have to say in five years' time, we have reduced our carbon emissions in these two buildings by X, because we have done Y. That's what we're, that's what we should be doing.
That's what we are focusing on, absolutely.
Can I just say, thank you for doing this. It really helps to, to see it. Because you picked the saying that it's all there for everybody to see, but here it is for everybody to see.
Certainly.
So that's just what I want to say.
Yes. Go on.
May I say that those figures are available to, are brought to you via the the deputy town clerk's reports of all the council activities. If it's only where for that document, we've just picked out and pulled together the ones that pulled that house off to do that.
It is, it has been out there. Am I all right to do the next part, Chair? Thank you. So, I mean, first of all, I mean, I shouldn't have to say this, but I do want to reiterate, this isn't like a pet project from, from the town clerk, you know, councillor Green and myself, and we want it to go through because we're doing it or anything like that. All we are is in charge of making sure this goes through the most effective, you know, cheapest, but with longevity in mind way, that we can administer something for the community. And so, I mean, all I want to say is that we're on it, do you know what I mean? It's like, we look at rooms, right, we think, well, we don't need to do that, we can save money on that, this is more efficient and so on and so forth. So decisions and work is being made constantly throughout this. And I appreciate your, your, your time in listening to this and also your interest in it. And, and of course, come to the building and see what's going on as well, so that you understand the interest and you get involved in it as much as you can. But please don't think this is like a them and us. Everything like councillor, you know, the chair said, has come to council for now, we have debated it and so on and so forth. However, I mean, I actually look forward to doing these reports every time, because so much has happened and it's actually really encouraging. And I think people have to realise that, that the reason I'm so excited about it is because this is all the things that the council want to do and here we are doing it. So, for example, the very first thing that I have to tell you, which is both brilliant and, and yes, a little bit worrying, is the NHS have inquired to Radford House if they can use some of their rooms. Now, the first thing about that is, isn't that exactly what we want to be able to benefit the community by making sure that they can access certain things? We've always said it's never going to be just about the arts or anything like that, and I will prove that in what I'm saying is happening in Radford House now. But the NHS have asked our help for the community to use these buildings. That is really important, mainly unfortunately, because they don't have the rooms themselves. And so they're looking for other community, you know, stakeholders in the community of how they can help and the council can assist. So it's not just some sort of like, you know, like art exhibition over there or some crash over there. It is, it's absolutely embedded in what we want to do for the community. And so these are going to be rooms that are used for one-to-one sessions and they are paying, you know, so this is benefiting both. The other bookings that we've had, again, which are varied, we've got the Christmas Fair booked. We've got a sketch club that was trialled. South East Kent College have got digital skills and an energy event for businesses. Ramsgate Horticultural Society has established at Radford House and have had their first meeting. Five rooms upstairs are now occupied by sitting tenants and we've had no one leave. Everyone who's come to Radford House has stayed. Chat time continues to be very popular and thank you for all those people who helped with that. And there have been a variety of talks, the feedback from that has been exceptional. Manspace, a meeting weekly, which is another thing this council wanted to get up and running, which is great. There's a weekly singing group, again, that's open to all, that's very important. Yes. I mean, so much of this is people that can just drop in, you know, so it's, it's, it's it's everything it should be. It is open to the community for various reasons, various ideas. So a repair cafe and shed, where possible, the tool bank are going to commence in April for a three-month trial. And we're having our first private booking, you know, again, because one of the things that we're constantly going on about, which to say in a minute, is the business plan and things like this are important.
So as well as the NHS, Kent County councillor using the Radford House for one-to-one sessions as well?
Yes, thank you. So the following surveys have been undertaken. A mortar survey to confirm that the building's made of so that we can replace and repair with appropriate materials. The asbestos refurbishment survey. The damp pathology survey, we've now addressed all the damp problems except for the flat roofs that need to be replaced. It's not worth repairing at the moment, because we'd just be, you know, doing things again. But this document will also help inform where heat is lost and how to mitigate this and save energy. Like I say, all the building works and everything we've done now on the heating is part of the meanwhile use ethos of like, what can this building do? A schematic of the electrics and pipe work has been undertaken, which will help the mechanical electrical consultants remapping what needs to be undertaken and anything redundant that we can remove to tidy the building. One of the things that councillor Green and town clerk and I were, were really pushing was like, should we just tidy this up? Because if we're going to keep it very simple and we're not going to do much to the building, we can at least take out the distracting elements. A further planning application has been necessary, which was submitted before Christmas and is currently awaiting validation by TDC. Now, if you remember, this is because we made the original planning application that was agreed cheaper to go out to tender. So the lift is going to go to the second floor, it no longer is. There's going to be a glass length way, which would have cost thousands, is no longer. So what we had to do is we had to sort of like put in a new application to make sure everything's going through. That, although time-consuming was in our favour, because it meant in the long run, the project was cheaper. What we also did to that, just to make everything more efficient, because we're constantly revising stuff, is an amended scheme in the car park to put back two parking spaces, because the way that it could have been done, there wouldn't be any and we thought for disabled parking and also in the long term for electric charging, we wanted to have those there. There's a new gate arrangement and we've been informed that the current gate is not safe for a community centre, unfortunately. So that's something that we'd have to do. A change to the main entrance door, as approved by council. Removal of the up and over doors. So basically, when you go into the, the front, you know, the big doors that open at the, at the top, they again aren't safe for the public if they're used. Now, one of the ideas was going to be that we kept them up so that people could see the history of the building. Long debates over this, we looked at them up and we decided that it would, from, from again, cost-wise, it would detract from what we're trying to show in that space, especially with the heritage of the fire service, but also the building. And it would be easier, cleaner, cheaper if we got them removed effectively. And permission to relocate the boiler, which is required to move in order to install the lift. So those were the things that we had to let planning know that we were doing, because it would be against the original planning application and we are waiting that. In other notes, the current version of the business plan, we're at version 10, is due for an update and a meeting should take place in the next month about this. This is something, like I say, we are at version 10 and we go over the whole time, because what we don't want to do is turn around and say, oh, well, there you go, there's the building. Oh, hang on a minute, it's costing us thousands. So we're really considerate about that. Now, again, in the long run, then we think about the rooms that have been left. You know, we're not just letting them to, you know, I don't know, Greg's a Costa Coffee, aren't they? We've got the NHS and the various people using them at the moment. They are people that need those rooms. So it's quite important that we look at this and see how it washes its face, effectively, the building. So, project manager Paul is now based at Radford House every Thursday afternoon. He took over from Andrew, who stepped down from the project, maybe, and he was up to speed the whole time. They've worked really well, the handover's gone brilliantly and we work very well with him. And he is really pushing to make sure that we are on schedule. Town clerk submitted, sorry, the town clerk has submitted a second community ownership fund bid. If you remember, we applied initially, unfortunately, we didn't get it, but we were asked to apply again. again, which we have done. And although we're concerned that the community own, community ownership fund is a problematic bid in Ramsgate already, that might have a negative effect, we have been at pains to point out what we do, what we do for the community and why we are different and how we are helping people. The room data sheets are finalised, which confirm the specs required in each room. So we've basically gone round and said, right, socket there, socket there, keep that one lights and so on and so forth. And the design team will now work out the specifics for Reba stage three. They're holding off until planning permission is required.
Granted.
Granted, it does, I thought that because it does say required here, I promise, but I did, I did think that's what you meant, so that's why I looked over, cheers. Right, in October, this is the thing, new building regulations, secondary legislation came into effect and we'll, we will need a building regulations principal designer. It's just what it is, it came and sort of like hit us, but we're dealing with it. In the industry, I've spoken about this before, but nobody exactly knew who was doing what. It's all being clarified and, and we're on it. So it's something that we are working with. It's not going to cost us a fortune, there might be a cost involved, but it's something that we can manage. I can confirm that the town clerk will respond to councillor Wing's request for information. We will respond to anybody's request of information, quite frankly. Why would we want you to know this? This is our, you know, project, isn't it? Which will be shared with all members. A full response should be coming, forthcoming next week. That's a lot to take in. Thank you for listening. Is there any questions? You're welcome.
Yes, I would like to thank everybody concerned with Radford House project and for the report we've had tonight. And I was delighted personally that my old service contacted me and asked for rooms and we pointed the direction of Radford House because the beacon is being renovated. Long, yes, and as is Coleman House, as is Ashford. Yeah. So where people are going to go already is quite, quite. Well, they haven't got any rooms there basically, so they're trying to seek, outsource, get rooms within the community and it's good, well situated.
Other members, can we just, are you happy to know the reports?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I only just want to comment that I have been, I'm completely unable to access the finance report, so I haven't read it. So I can note it, but I haven't read it because I, my, this particular thing.
If you've got any, if you've got any issues.
I just, yeah.
If I do with the chat.
Absolutely. It's just that I can't comment on it because I haven't been able to read it, that's all. No complaints.
That's what I mean.
It's too much.
You could have asked, sorry, I could have, I could have given it to you, Ellen, all right.
I know.
If you have to, to, for their input in it. I would like to say that if we do decide them, I would certainly leave it between you and the councillor and sharing and the capo. If you think it would be a one item meeting on Radford House and whether that should be held in Radford House, that might be, if members want to go down there, that might be, and then they can see for themselves. So, but I'll, I'll leave that, I'll leave that with you two. So that's the end of the meeting. Thank you ever so much for your attendance and input. And the date of the next meeting is Wednesday, the 27th of March at 7pm. Thank you all and good night.